Why? I mean, why jump on the mic?
Good evening. Before we call the meeting to order this evening, we do need to make a motion for the appointment of a treasurer pro tempore. If I could ask for a motion, please.
So moved, we appoint Mark Hersheiser as treasurer pro tempore.
Treasurer pro tempore, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Mark, can you call the roll, please? Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Burden?
Yes.
And now we'll call the meeting to order. Everyone will please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we'll reel back and have our treasurer pro tempore call the roll, please. Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mr. Burden?
Here.
Excellent. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website at www.wcsoh.org. Click on our district link, then select Board of Education, and then Board Doc's Agenda, and select this evening's meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.01 through 12.05. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. Mr. Hersheiser, thank you for calling the roll. Much appreciated. And if we can go ahead and move to our agenda topics this evening, this evening we do not have district highlights and recognitions, so we'll move to Agenda Item 4.01, Board Meeting Minutes for March 21st, 2016. I am showing nothing on the docket, however, we do need to ask if there are any questions, issues, or concerns about Board Meeting Minutes from our last board meeting. If not, we do not vote on Board Meeting, or Meeting Minutes, rather, so they are approved as written. We move to Agenda Item 5.01, Fiscal Review Committee Report. And I believe this evening we have John Walden and Vaughn Bell to present the presentation for our fiscal review committee.
Good evening. President Burden, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Hersheiser. My name is John Walden, and together with Pastor Vaughn Bell, we are here tonight to provide a report from the district's fiscal review committee. Before I get started, let me say I think it's a little bit sunnier out now, and want to get you in a good mood, just by recalling Saturday Night's victory by the Westerville South basketball team. So congratulations to Coach Kallo and the members of the team. I'm sure you'll talk about that later, but I want you in a good mood first. In addition to Vaughn and myself, the committee consisted of various community members, district officials, and two members of the Board of Education. Sorry. The complete description will be set forth on your last slide. The purpose of the committee was really threefold. That was to examine the financial data of the district, and Mr. Griffith and other district officials helped lead us through a five-year forecast. I think the board last saw one in October, and we'll see another one in May of this year. Some of the numbers we saw that are a working copy of that. Also, part of the purpose is to understand the potential levy renewal options. Vaughn, we'll talk about that a little bit more detail as we go on. And then finally, the third purpose of the group was to provide a recommendation from our committee about what the district should do with respect to the soon-to-be-expiring 2012 emergency levy that's on the books. With that understood, Vaughn is going to give you a little bit more about the process that we undertook as part of the review committee.
Good evening. The process was a relatively simple one. The committee came together. We met for, we had three meetings over the course of the months of February and the beginning of March. In those meetings, we reviewed, did an overview of the district's current financial status by reviewing the five-year forecast. We reviewed the five options that are available to you as the board in terms of options available with the levy. We discussed the options and arrived at a consensus. And in that discussion process, we not only talked amongst ourselves, but part of what we were charged and asked to do was to speak with family, friends, neighbors throughout the community, to also be able to gauge the communities where they were, to get their, so that they would have some input into the process as well. And so we put all of that together, the opinions and the views of the committee, combined with those that we received from talking to community members. And we came, and then the process will conclude here this evening with a recommendation being made to you from the committee.
So a little more about what we discussed in the meetings. As the board is aware, in March 2012, the community passed an emergency levy that provided revenue to allow the district to restore some programming that was cut after the failure of a November 2011 levy. At that time, when we were having, expenses were exceeding revenue, so some drastic cuts had to be made by the board. After the community passed the levy, and during actually the time leading up to the levy, the board advised the community that the additional money raised by that emergency levy would only last, projected to last, three years. But through good management, some sound financial decisions, the district has been able to stretch those dollars so that the cash balance could maintain for at least eight years, which is five years longer than was projected at the time we passed it in March 2012. And this is with adding an additional programming that was cut previously to that process, as you can see some of the numbers. As shown on the slide, the district will continue to spend less than it receives in revenue until fiscal year 18. Although I'm sure the board is aware, for purposes of the audience and others that are either listening to this or whatever, a fiscal year for the district is July 1 through June 30. If the district takes no action with respect to the expiring levy, the district will lose approximately $8.3 million in fiscal year 18, followed by $16.7 million in fiscal year 19, which then will require the district to use savings, existing savings, to maintain the programming that we currently have. But in the review of the committee, taking that action does not make business sense. And while Vaughn will explain it further, not reviewing the levy would impact the community and district even more so, because in 2013, the state, as part of its budget process, the state eliminated the property tax rollbacks of 10% for non-commercial property and 2.5% for owner-occupied credit, which in layman's terms effectively means that the state picks up the first 10 to 12.5% of a taxpayer's levy responsibility. So when this levy expires, if nothing is done, then we would lose the ability to have the state pick up that portion of any subsequent levy the district might pass, under current law. And with that understanding, we reviewed the levy options, and as Vaughn stated, we occurred with input from our friends and neighbors about options that we might take. Vaughn?
The five options that were presented, that were to be considered, the first option was to renew the emergency levy as-is, so to put an exact same copy of what we have now, to place that on the levy, so another five-year emergency levy. The second option was to renew the emergency levy, but to renew it for a term other than five years, more than five years. So it could be for five years, seven years, or up to 10 years. The third option was to renew the emergency levy as a substitute levy. In doing so, this would allow the district to receive additional revenue from any new construction that takes place within the district. This is an option that's new here in the state of Ohio. First became available in 2008, and it could be introduced as either a continuing levy, which means it would be ongoing, it would be permanent, or it could be for a set period of time of any length between five to 10 years. So with that option as a substitute levy, you could either make it continuing, or you could set a time limit for it, between five to 10 years. The fourth option that was considered was to actually do nothing, to let the current emergency levy expire, and then the district would then have to make some decisions as to what to do with the $16.7 million deficit that would occur. And then the fifth and final option was to do nothing, to let the current emergency levy expire, but then to place some other kind of levy initiative on the ballot during calendar year 2017. So let it expire, and then turn around and put something else on the ballot. So those were the five options that were considered. During our second meeting, in the month of February, we came back together as a group, compiled, talked about, had conversation about what we thought as individual committee members, talked about our exchanges with other community members. And then we utilized what's known as the dot technique. We were all given stickers, little dots, three different colors, red, yellow, and green. The green represented favorable option. Yellow, people were unsure. And then the red dots, people, it was unfavorable. People didn't really consider or care for that particular option. So each committee member was given dots, and then each one of the five different options was placed on a flip chart page that was put up on the wall. The committee members then took their dots of the three different colors and placed their dots up on the board according to the feedback that they received from other community members and themselves. This was done to see if, it wasn't scientific by any stretch of the imagination, but what it did provide us with is a visual of the feedback, a visual image for us to be able to see if there were any trends, if any one of the five options jumped out ahead and shoulders above the rest. And so once we walked through that process, we arrived at the recommendation that the committee wanted to present to the board this evening. Once we walked through that process and had internal conversations, it is the recommendation of the committee that you place on the ballot, renew a substitute levy for a continuing period of time. So to actually place a continuing substitute levy on the ballot. And now John will talk a little bit more about some of the reasoning rationale behind why that's the committee's recommendation.
Thank you, Vaughn. And going back, I think it was clear when he talked about the, what I talked a little bit about a couple slides ago, and what Vaughn talked about just previously, items, what we called Items Four and Five, which were the do-nothing items. It became pretty clear among the committee that neither of those options, in part for the part about the rollback portion, made no sense. We're still going to need this revenue. So there was nothing showing that would obviously replace that revenue, and if we're ultimately going to have to go get a new levy at some point in time, then we should take advantage of what the law allows us for the rollbacks, as opposed to merely letting a levy roll off and then go try to get a new levy where we don't get those benefits for the actual taxpayers. So Items Four and Five were quickly, kind of, not quickly, but after getting the consideration from, the input from others, and the process that we went through, were pretty much taken off the board in terms of most of our thoughts. With respect to what led us to reach the substitute levy for a continuing period of time is, in part, so all three involved renewing the levy. And what that means is, you already have a levy, it's already on the books. We pay it now, it's just going to be a renewal of some kind, even if we change the name. So we're not dealing with a new tax. What we also allows us to do with the substitute portion, and we've seen that in looking out and doing some research that other districts have already undertaken this approach, it also comes with the understanding that we're ultimately, based on the funding of school districts in the state, going to need new money at some point in time. So what we're worried about as we go through this process is setting up and having a renewal levy. Let's say if we just renewed this levy for another five years, at the same time we did that, we might end up having a requirement for new money. And as we know, trying to put on two levies at the same time brings you levy fatigue. And we already know what that's happened. We've gone through it, we believe, for most of us in this district in previous times. It also allows us to, as I said, maintain the property tax rollbacks and combine the understanding that we are going to need money in the future. So that's what led to us, when you put it all together, and the five options that we considered, led us to bring you the recommendation that Vaughn talked about. And really, that's kind of where we've ended up. We appreciate the opportunity to have us participate in looking at the district's finances and considering options of what to do going forward. As I said before, the last slide is really just a thank you to those that participated, and that gives a name. And really, from that presentation leads us to the next slide, which is what, if any questions you might have for us tonight. We know it's really going to be up to the board to make a decision about where we go and next steps. But anything we can do to answer questions, we're more than happy to do so.
And just to, I know Bill's here, Bill Merriman's here, who was in the committee as well. And I didn't see if any of the other committee members came in, but Bill, if there's anything else you want to offer as well, feel free, but turn over to the board.
Question?
Questions?
Two. Well, I have more, but these two go together. When you were talking with the community members that you talked with, on the one hand, what points seemed to be the hardest to communicate around these particular issues? And on the other hand, what points seemed to resonate most fully with the people you talked to?
Members of the board, Mr. Baker, for me, at some point, it was explaining, the hard, going to your first question, was, which was the, what was the hardest point? I think it was describing the substitute portion. It's a newer law, 2008's when it came into play, and understanding that, and I think somewhat has to do with the levy lingo, because we have the temporary, what I would call in layman's terms, a temporary levy is called an emergency levy. So it's a set period of time. And then understanding that you could actually renew a levy with what you call a substitute, which would mean it's not new. So I mean, again, just my stating that shows you, it's not, it's really that clear. So that was more the difficult part, to understand that we could make it a substitute levy, which would capture some of the growth, you know, what remaining growth we might have from construction, property, new houses, albeit not as much as when the district faced before. But we do know there are some developments going on that would not be just, I believe it would, it doesn't have the impact of House Bill 920, which is, which kind of prevents us from realizing the full growth of past levies as-is. So that was the hardest part. And on the second part, I think, even if the people that I communicated with, I think to a T, everyone agreed that there should be a renewal, that we don't want to lose the rollbacks. It just makes common business sense, that fits with, you know, that makes the most sense. So if you're going to have to renew it, if you're going to have to get new money anyway, everyone seemed to agree upon that you need to renew it in some fashion. And then there were some that, you know, that you could see maybe pros and cons in any of the first three, but long-term, understanding what the district is going to face, and knowing how we fund our schools in Ohio, that you're always going to have to ultimately seek a levy at some point. Making it a continuing levy so that you don't have competing levies so close in time were, I think, more attractive to the people I spoke with.
Thank you.
Any additional questions this evening?
Maybe just along the lines of, and Vaughn or Bill, if you want to chime in here, and John, no, you're fine. I really want to dive a little more deeply into the conversations you had with people in the community, because I know that your charge was to bring us your best sense of this, but to also go into the community and just really talk to people. So the idea of what was hardest to communicate, what was helpful to kind of clarify, the continuing substitute, and then emergency, you know, when you talk about emergency, really like bells should be going off. Well, no, it's not that kind of emergency, it's kind of an emergency. Well, that's just loopy to me as well, as confusing to community. Was there anything else that you would say during the discussion of the group, when you all were meeting together, and when you were talking to your individual friends, coworkers, community, neighbors, that you would say, you know, this piece of it really seemed to capture them in a positive or in a negative way?
I would have to say, the first hurdle that we had to get over was the language, people getting used to the language. The word emergency, it does scare people, because it, in general terms, it communicates that there's really something wrong here, and we've got to do something, we've got to do something right now. There's a fire, the building's burning down, so it's an emergency, we got to put the fire out. But once, you know, most of these conversations that I had were probably in the neighborhood between a half hour to 45 minutes, because by the time you start walking down through the implications of each of the five different options, it's a lot to kind of take in. And so for me, I also became a little better informed, I became a lot more informed being part of the process as to how the funding process works. I don't think most people actually understand how school funding works. And so to then have to walk through five different options, sometimes it would take 10, 15 minutes of just explaining a little bit of the background detail before you start hitting the different options. So a lot of people also didn't understand that as the board, that you had all of these different options to choose from. And so I think another theme that stuck out, that hit people in a positive light, even after going down through all the five options, when I would just make the statement and say, no new taxes, okay? It's just a continuing, the funding level that we currently have, no new taxes. But if you let it fall off, if we put something else on the ballot, then it's going to be a 12.5% hit for most of you.
And you feel like that, that was a significant piece of capturing people's attention when you said, nothing will revert to, doing nothing will someday revert to what would amount to an additional 12.5%?
Yes.
You feel like that kind of, and I, listen, and I, I'm just so appreciative of what you all have done, really, the whole, the whole, the gang, gang, the whole committee, very appreciative. And I know, I'm really kind of teasing out Nancy's question. I know it's the same kind of thing, but it seems to me, just, this is really so important, that if we are going to go this direction, that we are able to provide people with just very clear language in, this is what's recommended, and this is why it's recommended, because, and I'm going to be quiet here, because we know that ballot language is usually not very clear. So in what we say, we need to be more than clear. And so that's why I'm teasing out from both of you, and again, Bill, if you have anything, just teasing out from both of you, okay, you feel like that kind of captures the conversations that you had in the community. I want to, we want to know, capturing those conversations that you had in the community. It sounds like it was all about, this is not an additional tax, it's continuing. Emergency doesn't mean the school district is calling 911 and we're in trouble, and it in fact will capture a law that has been changed, the 10%, the 2.5%, the 12% overall. Am I teasing that out too much, or you understand why I'm really kind of working with that?
For me, yes. I think, now personally, one of the, one of the things that really concerned me was if you went with another option and not a continuing option, the thing that would scare me would be when, because at some point in time, you're going to have two levies coming back that you're going to have to deal with at the same time, where you're going to have to come back to the community and ask for new money, and that's going to collide with you having to come back and ask for a renewal of this renewal. And so you're going to have two different levies on the ballot at the same time, and as a board, you're going to have to turn around and communicate that to the community. And I saw how challenging that was, just in the conversations I've had with walking down through those different options. So to have two on the ballot at the same time, or even within close proximity to each other, most people, I think, would probably at that point say, you don't know what you're doing, I'm voting no on everything.
Right. And clearly, the battling of the levies is something we want to avoid. Really, thank you for letting me tease that out a little bit. Thanks, guys.
But I just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to participate in this process, and also to let you know that the community members that I did talk to, every one of them, without exception, wanted to, wanted me to communicate to you and to Dr. Kellogg how much they appreciate two things. Number one was your transparency in this process. And secondly, your willingness to include them in the conversation, because they said so often, they're not even, they don't feel like they're even included in the conversation. So they said, be sure to tell them thank you. So thank you.
If I could just quickly expand on kind of what Vaughn said, and my discussions, and even my own thoughts, were that we did a good job, you've done a good job, the district, the board, the previous board, I mean, the board in general, and the district, of making it, so we're not, we weren't here in 2014 telling you why we had to have another levy. So we went past, we went past the projections. We've done it with adding some of the programming back that was lost. We're looking for smart opportunities to add in additional programming, whether it be additional bussing, or some of the all-day, you know, looking at different options that are good for the students of the community, and we've made it extended. And yes, you could go and roll the dice and extend it as far as possible, and burn down all, whatever savings we might have, but that doesn't make strong fiscal sense. I mean, when we talked about the levies before, and we talked to the people that I know in the business community, that's not how they would run their business. And if you remember, we've continually heard that, you know, to the extent possible, run the school like a good business. Well, the option that we're bringing you is what a good business would do. They're going to look at the options, how do I take advantage of what the government will give us, and that will be the state in this case, to allow us to have, minimize, mitigate what the taxpayers themselves will have to pay. And combining that with the good stewardship, we know we're going to have to use additional revenue, and not bringing it together, as Vaughn said, and force us to have a huge super issue, whether it's two or two within a year and a half. So it's good business planning, fiscal planning, that brings us to the recommendation we brought to you. And we hope that we can, if there's anything else, we can be glad to answer it. Thank you very much.
So John and Vaughn, thank you. Very much appreciated. I think that a couple of things that I've heard emphasized are, obviously, this levy itself goes beyond the realities of revenue stabilization for the district. itself goes beyond the realities of revenue stabilization for the district, which I see very much in line with a continuing or substitute levy. We are now a landlocked entity in Westerville. And as a businessperson, if you can predict certain, you know, parts of your revenue over time, you can do a much better job of planning expense as well as revenue projections over the longer period of time. So that stabilization is extremely helpful, obviously, to the board, and to the district, and to our citizens, because we can minimize the number of levy shocks that result from that. I think that the inclusion of the ability to pick up on new construction is obviously extremely helpful. It's nice to see that our state legislature began to at least chip away at the, what is it, four times unconstitutional school funding model that's used by the state, that the legislature has not addressed in whole. I'm glad, though, that they chipped away at the edges on that in common sense ways that work for our citizens. The big piece for this levy, obviously, is that there are unnecessary consequences that can be avoided around the 10 and the 2 and 1/2% relative to what impacts this would have to our taxpayers, that come from us approaching this issue smartly. And we do not have to have that type of an impact on our citizens, and we do not have to increase taxes because we're continuing this levy. So I think, all in all, those are, those are things that resonate with me as a taxpayer. I think that our focus on the emergency levy being extended those additional years is a message around our stewardship. I love that you used that word. Stewardship has been a hallmark term for this board in the previous two cycles, relative to an operating reserve, relative to expenses not exceeding revenue, and that shows in our fiscal strength, as well as in the awards that we receive from the auditor's office. So I think that all of these things add up well. I guess my request would be, Dr. Kellogg, that we move quickly to get to a final proposal stage, so that may be vetted in formal fashion with the board, so that we can begin to communicate these recommendations, or the recommendation, to the broader community.
I appreciate that, Mr. Burdick. A couple, specific to that, I think Ms. Griffith and I can prepare for the board, the resolution that we'd need to review and act on in the coming board meetings, so that we can get ourselves headed in the right direction. A couple of things people may want to be aware of, two examples of similar levy options that occurred around us, Big Walnut, two years ago, I believe it was, same thing, passed. Delaware, just this recent election cycle, did similar. It is, of course, a renewal, which generally does pretty well on the ballot. The substitute one is a new one, it takes a little bit more explaining, too, as we've seen, but I think it's a good option. The three things that came to mind to me were pretty simple. Maintain the district's revenue, retain the rollback for taxpayers, create more opportunities for kids. And that's the simplified formula for what I see coming out of revenue from that committee. And I appreciate the time they put in the three evenings, great conversations, talking to community members, and bringing us back, great, great questions. I thought for Bart and I, and then I know Rick and Tracy were in the room as board members as well, it was good to hear the conversation. So, yeah, next steps, we can schedule with board leadership to bring a resolution to the board, and then look at the timeframe that the state has for bringing the ballot forward. There's some timeframe for that that we'll have to look at as well, but this will give the community, you know, by doing that now, you, if you're projecting to November, which is what I'm assuming we're doing, which means we're actually a year in front of the expiration, or when we stop the collection, but that doesn't affect, all it does is give us a runway to get it done, and then begin planning from there. The collection would start when the current one expires, so it doesn't change that timeframe, but it gives us a runway with the community to say, to have lots of conversation about what does this mean, what does it mean for you. It also means, by going a little bit earlier than when it expires, that in case legislators get any notions about changing the rollback piece, prior to going on the ballot, we beat them to the punch. Because, don't forget, this is coupled by income tax decreases. This is a double-edged sword, income tax decrease, but take away the rollback, right? So as a taxpayer, you get, you beat the system, so to speak. So I think it gives us a great opportunity. So we'll start working on timing for doing that this spring.
Thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you very much. And to the rest of the committee as well.
And to Bart, who's not here, he did a lot of work on the final. I just sat there and made sure everybody got water and had name tags. Bart did the hard work, so appreciate that.
Excellent. Well, we'll move on to next agenda topic, public comments, 6.01. Public comments may be made prior to the action by the board on business agendas. Public comment at this point in the agenda will be restricted to items on the agenda only. Each person shall be allotted five minutes to make comments or remarks at this time. At the board president's discretion, the amount of time allocated to this public comment section may be limited. We would also ask that persons addressing the board reference the agenda topic that they are speaking on tonight. And this evening, our first person for public comment will be Meta Han.
Good evening, members of the board. I want to address 8.09, and it's concerning a one-time payment to point few teachers that they have requested a one-time payment spent, for their time spent packing their materials to move into their new classrooms. As you know, I'm a retired teacher, I remind you that a lot, and I switched classrooms probably at least six times in my teaching career, and certainly never got paid for it. But, you know, I was sort of surprised and almost speechless at this request, but some people in the community asked me to address this with you this evening. So I think I'm just going to remind you that at the end of every school year, the teachers pack up all their stuff. And then at the beginning of the next school year, they get out all their stuff. So in my opinion, there is no need for them to receive a one-time payment for packing up their things that they would be packing up anyway. And then in the fall, when they come back to school, to retrieving those things that they would be retrieving anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, very much appreciated. Our next speaker this evening will be Doug Rankin.
Name's Doug Rankin, I've been called a lot of other things, but it doesn't matter. Okay, relating this to your fiscal review, the first speaker that was here. With assistance, I was able to go to your website once again and find the fiscal analysis of receipts and expenditures. And I just have, I have a few comments on the format, showing the receipts and then the expenses by certain periods of time. It'd be nice if you showed at the beginning of that, in the left-hand column, the budget for the year, and then show the man years that represents on the salary and wages, the number of man years that that finances, and then the, whether that's a full-time permanent position, and also the end strength. In one of my previous lives, I had to eliminate half the people in the organization and systems command. We all went down '89, we had 44,000 people, and within a year, we had to eliminate 22,000 individuals. Anyway, that was our lifetime. So anyway, I want to get to this, the main thing is, on the, this rollback stuff here of 12 and 1/2%, the legislature went ahead and did that, saying that, well, you present what happens to the effect if you don't continue that. I have a question on legislative liaison. I mean, this affects the property tax, and it was discombobulated when they put it in the paper, and what it was, and how the effect was. But are legislative liaisons in the schools on this particular topic of the legislature saying that if you don't do this, then you're going to lose, you're going to, you're going to roll back the taxes to a plus? I think what needs to be done, the legislative liaisons of the schools need to go to the House and the Senate, to the chairs, and saying, hey, we don't need this liability. It appeared to me, in part, smoke and mirrors, wasn't clear, but it seemed like a type of an instrument to push the passing of certain legislation. I don't know. It seems to me that there was, there was, trying to find a nice word for it, no nice word, but anyway, a little, things that were tried on me, a little alleged blackmail, or whatever, on, to do things. Okay, that was, but I would like to, I heard some comments, this particular options here was never explained in my neighborhood, whatever, but, so I was asked to come forward here. So here I am, and that's the thing it is here. I don't think, I've read, I've moved 18 times in my career, okay, four continents, but I haven't seen, in a state like Ohio, it's constant wanting more. I read, read financial stuff, and where you have a union, they came out and they said, hey, it's 40% more compensation than non-union, 40 to 70%. Now, that's alleged, you know, I didn't do the study. But the, there's, one of the things, the thing that you can do is on your retirement. 30 years ago, in the federal government, they went to another retirement system, it was, used to be 75% for, I think, 30 years, and then now it's down to 25%. But you have a Roth IRA. You do a Roth IRA so that when you get your compensation, I mean, whatever organization is, give a certain amount of money to the people, the workers, the employees, the administrators, whatever you want to call it, but it's your money. You don't have to wait until, and then you don't have to come out with all, as much harassment that you receive, or whatever, when you go through this, this procedure. So that was just one of the things I thought that I'd bring forth. I had a Roth IRA, so I still got it, man. So anyway, there's advantages to that, and there's advantages to the corporation.
Five minutes.
Okay. I appreciate your time, and every day's a great day. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rankin, Ms. Han, thank you very much for your comments this evening, much appreciated. We'll move on to our next agenda topic, 7.01, resolution to approve financial reports, seeking a resolution to approve financial reports and investments as of February 2016. And the financial report lists all the funds ending in February of 2016. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any report on these that we need to follow through on? Mark? I mean, I know that we've all read through them, but...
Yeah, Mr. Griffith gave me some notes. Our general fund year-to-date receipts is a little over $140 million. Our general fund year-to-date expenditures is $102 million. All funds year-to-date receipts, $183.7 million, and our all-funds expenditures is $143.2 million.
Any questions?
No.
If not, may I have a motion, please?
You do.
Sorry. If not, may, please call the roll mark.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
There you go. Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
I was actually calling for the motion again, because I was reading ahead, so I need to stop doing that. Our next agenda topic, 7.02, is amended resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission, authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
And Mark, if we can have an update on this topic?
This is an annual resolution to approve the amounts that have been set by the Franklin County Auditor. This is an item that we bring before the board annually.
Any questions or issues?
I think it's just important to point out, given the discussion that we just had, this is an annual requirement that is done. The auditor says what the rates are, we certify those every year. Because it talks about certifying rates for tax levies, I didn't want anybody to think that we had jumped the gun, and we're certifying the tax levy that was being discussed earlier.
Any additional questions or issues? If not, can you please call the roll mark?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Moving to agenda item eight, encompassing 8.01 through 8.11, which is personnel consent action. If I can have a motion, please?
Second.
And Lloyd, this evening?
Good evening, President Byrd, members of the board. Tonight's consent agenda contains 11 sections involving 76 persons. I have a short person issue with the microphone, so I'll do my best not to squeak through this. It's a microphone issue, thank you. Let's see. Section 8.01 is resignation of one classified staff member and one substitute. 8.02 is the resignation of one outside supplemental contract and one teacher. 8.03 is retirement of one classified staff member. 8.04 is retirement of two teachers. 8.05 is a temporary change of assignment for four classified staff members. 8.06 is a contractual status change for six classified staff members. 8.07 is leave of absence for two classified staff members. 8.08 is a leave of absence for two teachers. 8.09 are various one-time payments. 8.10 is the employment of two classified staff and two substitutes. And 8.11 includes various supplemental contracts for five employees and 10 outside supplemental contracts. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or issues from the board? If not, Mark, can you call a roll, please?
Mrs. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. Thank you.
I'm actually going to take a brief moment away from the agenda, just since we have so many new faces here this evening, as to how the rules of the board work relative to Robert's Rules of Order, which we've mentioned a couple of times this evening. There's actually a really nice statement that I'll share briefly on the topic of how we bring things to motion. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. And most of the items listed on the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation, and documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member, which has occurred in the past, over the last two board cycles, and every board cycle. But I thought it was worthwhile to cover that item, as I said, with so many new faces here, you can learn a little bit about, a little bit more about how we operate. We'll move to agenda item nine, which is 9.01, final reading of policy 2461, recording of IEP team meetings. Any questions, concerns, or issues related to this final reading?
Are you taking all of the policies as a consent? Oh, 102, 103, 104?
I was. I was going to...
Just wanted to make sure we were.
Yeah. We'll do them as a full consent, all four. So let me go ahead and ask for a motion for a consent order, or a consent motion.
So moved. Second.
And that being said, we'll go through the other final readings. 9.02 is a final policy reading for FMLA leave, putting us in alignment with the family with the Family Medical Leave Act of nineteen ninety-three as amended. Nine point zero three, three, four, three, zero point zero one, F M L A as well, relative to military and family leave, and a final reading of four, four, three, zero point zero one, which is family medical leave as well. So three policies relative to family medical leave, one relative to the recording of I E P team meetings. Any questions, concerns, or issues? If not, Mark, may you call the roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Moving to agenda topic ten, ten point zero one, old business, we have none this evening. And moving to agenda item eleven, recommended action for new business, we have four first readings this evening. We do not call for a motion or vote on first readings, however, we do ask for a report. And I see that Mr. Reeves is making his way to the podium.
Good evening, President Byrd, members of the board. The first policy that I have tonight is policy five, two, two, three, which speaks to absences for religious instruction. This policy aligns with current law and authority granted to districts to adopt changes to this policy. This policy is an amendment to a policy that already exists. This policy was originally released in September of two thousand fourteen in response to legislation authorizing districts to adopt a policy permitting the release of students from school to attend a program of religious instruction. Revisions to the policy are offered in response to concerns expressed regarding First Amendment rights of students and parents. That is a national response, not a response to anything specific to this district. These policy, these revisions reflect the current state of the law and should be adopted, or is recommended to be adopted, to maintain accurate policies. And I'd also note that this is not to be confused with policy eighty-eight hundred, which is the one that talks about religious and patriotic ceremonies and personal and private observances. When you look at some of the changes in the policy, it gives parents or guardians the consent in writing, the ability to, to request in writing to be removed for religious instruction at their church, synagogue, or mosque. Sponsoring entity maintains attendance records and makes them available to the district upon request. Sponsor entity provides and assumes all liability for the student, and the student assumes all responsibility for the work. I mean, it's pretty, pretty straightforward.
I have one thing that I think is funky in here. So we want to give them an excused absence, but then it says, students shall not be excused from a core curriculum subject course to attend the release time instruction.
And I read that to say that we would have the right to say, your four courses, math, science, social studies, and English, that we could deny that. And it does sound in conflict, and we can touch base with maybe some legal advice to see what exactly are they, are they asking? Because even in the information that we receive, there's no explanation around that point.
I think we do need explanation around that, because it's, it's, I feel like it's a conflict.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
But I think Mr. Reeves hit the nail on the head. It's a legislator's way of making, ensuring that our master schedule, the scheduling of our students into their core classes, to make sure that they get what is required here, what we're looking at is an elective addition to their educational program. And so what you can't do is come to us and say, I can't come to English class this year because I'm going every day to my church or my synagogue for this religious instruction. That's a trade-off, right? So within our system, we would, if we have a family approaches about this kind of leave, I would expect our school to see what flexibility there is in our master schedule to allow for that if there was a conflict. But what it doesn't allow is say, well, I'm going to go to the religion class and not take my English class.
Agreed. I just think we could add something to this or take it away so it reads that way, because right now, as a parent, reading that, you, you, you don't get that from it.
I agree. And I was thinking, you know, you have A, B, C, and D. I was thinking, add an E, you know, when we're talking, students will not be considered absent when the religious instruction does not occur within the content, or within the timeframe of a core curriculum class. I also think we need to specify what a core curriculum class is, and we should probably say that it's core academic curriculum. For those of us who considered music our core, then we should say what we're talking about with academic curriculum.
Sure.
And we also, there is nothing in here that suggests there are any limits. So I was wondering if it meant that every day when I had a course that was not a core course, that every day through the year, I could miss that to do the religious instruction course elsewhere? And I was just wondering what guidance we could get on some form of limitation, whether limitation is acceptable under the legislation or whatever. I'm not suggesting that students shouldn't be allowed to participate in religious instruction, but I do think we need to understand what the parameters are.
Sure. I can find out all of those points.
Okay.
So for clarification, I am hearing that the board will be asking for a second reading for this? Thank you. Next policy?
Good evening, good evening, President Byrd, members of the board, Superintendent Kellogg, Mr. Hershizer. I'm here to present for your consideration revisions to policy five, three, four, zero, student accidents for a first reading. This policy is being updated to comply with Ohio Revised Code concussion protocol endorsed by the Ohio High School Athletic Association. Previously, policy two, four, three, one, interscholastic sports, and policy eight, five, one, zero, wellness were updated to reflect this language. Thank you for your consideration. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I had a wording question, and I know what we mean, but I also like our policies to be as clear as they possibly could be. The student receives written clearance that it is safe to return to the, to the P E class and/or athletic practice or competition from a physician or other healthcare provider authorized by the board, et cetera. It suggests that the physician has to be authorized by the board as well. So we need to shift the wording so that we're not saying all physicians have to fill out a form to be authorized by the board to authorize a child's return.
I'll look at adjusting that language.
Thanks.
Any additional questions? If not, we'll move to the next policy reading, student records.
Good evening, President Byrd, Vice President Velardo, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Hershizer. Before you, as an update to policy eighty-three, thirty, student records, these proposed changes come from Neola and reflect new components of federal law. Additionally, the policy, policy has been reviewed and streamlined by district legal counsel. So the proposed revisions reflect new language defining school officials, which are individuals or contracted companies that the district is using to perform a specific task. These individuals might include volunteers, attorneys, auditors. So they're individuals that need to have student information, and this authorizes the release of that information to them in order for them to complete that task. The revisions also will remove a section of policy that identifies procedural matters rather than policy matters. Dr. Nestor Baker, I think you may approve of that one. These procedures are set at the federal level, so including them as board-authorized procedures is both irrelevant and unnecessary. The revisions would also clarify the process of requesting and providing copies of student records, and also specify that student email addresses would only be released in order to establish accounts for online educational services being used by the district. This is exclusionary language that simply gives us the ability to release student email information to those companies that we would be using to provide services for students' online accounts. In all other cases, student email addresses would be protected. This also aligns policy with the practice of establishing September thirtieth as the date by which families may opt out of the release of directory information, and it eliminates reference to requiring the use of a form for the release of information to the military as there is no rule or statute supporting this process. And finally, the proposed revision eliminates unnecessary language regarding the types of media that would be used to store records, and language that essentially says, an employee will not be liable for the release of the information if it's done in accordance with the policy. So the language basically says, if you do what the policy says, you're not going to get in trouble, which you could probably put on every board policy. So those are the proposed revisions, and entertain any questions?
Questions or issues?
You read my mind. I was going to ask, because it's been through our legal counsel as well as Neola.
Well, this is right in my wheelhouse, so I'm a bit surprised when I, when I read this, and maybe there are additive policies that cover this, particularly in this, this notion of the designation of non-school actors as school officials, to provide them access with, access to, to information. What I'm surprised by, and like I said, it may be included in other policies, is there is no reference to, in terms of an agreement between those parties, to instruments like non-disclosure agreements, or master services agreements that, and the reason I bring this up is, is that within, within the corporate world, relative to data protection and privacy now, there is the expectation of the management of the chain of custody. So if I am the caretaker of these records, and I have a contractor, that they have one particular bad actor on that contracting team that decides to go rogue and take all of the, all of the, the privileged information out of the system, more and more, from a regulatory standpoint, the blame is lodged upon the hiring, or the hiring, the hire-er of the contractor, not on the contractor themselves. And it goes back to due diligence, it goes back to those services agreements and N D As, but I don't see any concept of that in, in this policy or in others. So I'm curious, is there anything that approaches that within the public sector, or is it just assumed we can trust everybody?
I think you see that within the contracts themselves. If, if we were to contract with a company and it requires the release of student information, you would see that type of language within that contract. Now, there's also another aspect of the release of public records, and that is what the board designates as directory information. That's information about students that can be released without needing to first secure parental permission. And so with the release of directory information upon request, there is a caveat within the law itself that says, if the individual requesting this information uses it for other purposes, they first have to also let you know that they are not using it for business purposes. If they violate that, they then lose their right to request student information from you, again, for, I believe the period is five years. So there is some information, depending on what type of information is being released, and the category under which it is being released, versus contracts that you would sign to provide that information so the vendor can do the work that you're asking them to do.
Okay, I, and as I've gone through the section that, that you were referencing, and we get to the point where it says, this is why, why I raise this point, there's a statement that basically says, the above identified outside parties must perform services or functions that the board, whether otherwise, uses employees for, which makes sense, this is why we're, we're contracting or hiring folks outside of our system to do that. But B, be under the direct control of the board with respect to the use and maintenance of education records. And that's where, that's where my curiosity has kind of peaked, because the points that you just made are excellent ones. We're using, we're using a legal safety net in the form of contracts. The curiosity to me is, is that the contracts are being administered by the administration, but the board is guaranteeing the proper use. And that's the piece of language that I thought was interesting.
And we could double-check with legal counsel, but I don't know that there would be an issue with incorporating language such as the Board of Education or its assigns, you know, to, to reflect the, the employees. So that, I believe, could be in there as well, which then implies that the individuals are operating under the district employees who are therefore authorized to sign those contracts and hire for those procedures.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think it makes it, it deems it necessary for a second reading. It's certainly something for, for us to check on. Like I said, it's just a curiosity from, from my own career, where, where it's definitely done different in the corporate and private sector than it's done in the public sector, so.
I think that's, it's very important, and I do think the change needs to be made. For the sake of people who aren't online reading it, I don't, don't want the people who can't read it to think that there is nothing that addresses data concerns and security concerns within the policy. That language already exists within our current policy and is not up here now to be changed. And also, within the procedures of the district, there are forms related to the contract requirements for that. It's not in any of the changes that you'll see, it is all available online under policies in the board docs site that you may be on now or may wish to go to when you get home. I spend all my time.
Excellent, very good points. Yeah, I think that, you know, my interest in, in this in particular is, is our expectation of the handling of data outside of our control, right? As opposed to how we handle the data, which I believe, Nancy, is what you're referencing. You know, we have very clear policies on how we handle data as, as a board and administration, as well as within our, our teaching and administrative staff. Excellent. No other questions? All right. Thank you very much, appreciate that. And the last first reading will be policy eighty-six, sixty, transportation of students by private vehicle.
Thank you, President Byrd. Again, this policy eighty-six, sixty, transportation of students by private vehicle is an amendment to an existing policy. This policy will then align with our current practice, volunteer policy requirements, and current administrative codes. These revisions reflect current state law and are recommended to be adopted to maintain accurate policies. This policy is revised in order to comply with the Ohio Administrative Code three, three, oh, one, dash, eight, three, dash, one, nine, which notes that non-conforming vehicles cannot be used to transport students routinely to and from school. O D E further explains that this rule does not regulate incidental use, only routine transportation to and from school. O D E suggests that districts should make their own appropriate local decisions about using personal vehicles for incidental transportation of students. And I know that when you look at the policy amendments, we include the incidental, which takes away the, the routine and clarifies that a little bit. And no person shall be approved for the incidental transportation of students in a private vehicle who is not either an employee of the district, an approved volunteer, or a parent of the student enrolled in the district. And we also have liability requirements of persons who wish to transport students in a private vehicle. I know Deputy Superintendent Hershizer and Transportation Director Line, we sat down a couple of times, we met with our, Mr. Line met with our insurance providers to get their recommendations of what that liability should be, and that will appear in the administrative guidelines. That would be three hundred thousand dollar combined single limit, auto liability and personal injury of a hundred thousand dollars, bodily injury of three hundred thousand dollars, and property damage of a hundred thousand dollars as minimal requirements to be able to transport students for incidental transportation. It is also very highly recommended that there is no one-on-one transportation, except obviously, it does not apply to a parent for their own child, they have a right to transport their own child. But whether it's a teacher, one-on-one, in, in a vehicle with a student, or another parent, that is, that is strenuously recommended to be put in our guidelines as, as well. Any adult transporting a student must have a background check. That aligns with our volunteer policy of getting a background check to potentially supervise a student without a staff member there. Secondly, it also requires that they follow all of Ohio's child-passenger safety laws, which probably doesn't impact secondary as much as it might impact elementary.
I'm actually glad to see this. The clarifications that are in this address, questions and concerns that come to me every year, about field trips and so forth and so on, so I'm, I'm pleased with what we're doing in this, and it makes very good sense. I have one little tiny nitpicky thing. It says, no person shall be approved for the incidental transportation of students in a private vehicle who is not an employee of this board and approved volunteer, the parent of a student enrolled in this district. That makes it sound like you've got to be all three.
Three, that really limits.
Yeah, it sure does. Yeah, there might be, what, five people that, yeah. So we just need to put and/or, or whatever, yeah.
Makes sense.
I just really don't want to do all that driving.
It's, it's...
Okay.
He was like, me, me.
Any, any additional questions, concerns or issues? I would agree with Dr. Nestor Baker. Clean, simple, easy to understand revision.
Sure.
And it hits the mark, so thank you. Excellent, thank you. We'll move to our next agenda topic, recommended action for standing business. We have none this evening. And our next is 13.01 for public comments. We'll take just a second as we have our sign-in sheet brought forward. At the conclusion of the business agenda, interested persons may comment on any subject. Each person shall be allotted five minutes to make comments or remarks at this time with no restriction on the number of speakers. Our first speaker this evening is Tom Pham.
Thank you, the board members, Mr. Byrd and Dr. Kellogg for allowing me to speak here tonight. And thank you for all the parents and students who came here tonight to support me. If you came here to support me, please stand now. All right, thank you. So I have noted the mention of the four board strategic plan is community, parents, students, staff, and are engaged as partners. But due to respect, we should submit the adoption of CPM math curriculum is the antithesis For the past three years, our administration has told us that CPM curriculum has been adopted because it's good for students in that prepares them for college, enhances them for thinking skill, thus equipping them for affecting, for living their lives. This also happened to be the exact argument given by the textbook company in their online advertisement. However, I cited in the petition, two university professors from California say that CPM does not prepare students for college math. And indeed, the student wouldn't require tutoring to succeed. Apparently, there's also two high schools, as somebody skyrocketed numbers, Westerville students who now require tutoring outside of school to understand math. So taxpayer must spend more money for tutoring because of the school that they already pay for or not teaching their student equitably. In addition to the emphasis of the education today is that school should be fostering math customized learning. That is the learning addresses of students and their individual styles. But CPM teaches math in the only one style, discovery. There is no allowance for those who do not learn well in this method. And although students recognize the CPM style of learning has the potential to be affected, the discovery method to be unproductive for students who do not have solid prior knowledge. The process of CPM continually using guess and check to find the correct answer to counter how we should learning. No one's use guess and check under professions. Instead, we use learning how to use our gradually resources at delivery, denial to use us in CPM. Furthermore, many students resent idea that they have been graded according to how well they can teach math during the mandatory group test, which count for 20% of student grades. If a student can teach the concept well enough, the other members of the group could cause a lower grade for the student who understand the lesson teach well. Is that really fair? Did administration do the job? Please consider this analogy. The protocol of the FDA approving any drug implements a lengthy process of accessing concern and the risk associated with human consumption of that drugs. The process was using a proven this curriculum in Westerville students? Was there a lengthy investigation into this for the long-term result of students? What were the concern affect of this curriculum Westerville student have? Our charge is that the administration did not do the due diligently before pushing this curriculum through. We have trusted the textbook company because they wrote glowing reviews about their own curriculum. We also had teacher from all the district come to Westerville to tell us how good the curriculum is. And just how choose that teacher to talk to us? The textbook company? Isn't this like a doctor opening an office and say writing review say like he the best doctor in 2016? This sound like what my country would do. And by the way, Vietnam is a communist country. Did we know that Dublin School tried CPM curriculum for two years until the parents went to their school wall and demanded that it will be thrown out? Why don't we ask Dublin? They didn't like it. Did the administration work together? It will apparently not. Back in September, I sent out three letters to complaints.
Five minutes.
To Dr. Kellogg, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Hila. For more reason, the one address to Mr. Hila was mistakenly sent out to.
Sorry, Mr. Pham, your five minutes has expired.
But in three months later, I have never received any response from anyone.
Mr. Pham.
In that same time period, I sent out four letters.
Mr. Pham.
To send.
Mr. Pham.
To the congressman and receive personal.
Five minutes has expired.
When I began interviewing the virtual teacher.
Mr. Pham.
I was told by Mr. Hila that he found it this concerning that I had not contact the administration. They apparently were not communicating with each other.
Mr. Pham, your five minutes has expired.
He also found that the Dr. Kellogg has taught parents that teacher would choose whatever means instruction.
Mr. Pham.
As long as they stay within the guideline of approval course study. However, teacher were told.
Mr. Pham.
That needed to stay in the course and teach from the CPM manual.
Mr. Pham, your five minutes has expired.
Now that there are some teacher in the district who think that CPM is a good way to teach math.
Mr. Pham.
But there are other teacher in.
Unfortunately, I'll need to suspend public comments. Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Doug Rankin.
I just wanted to follow up on some of the things on, on the, this substitute levy. Maybe something, something you may want to check into or look into. It's, says about new construction would be included in the, in the tax base. At what point in time is that the new construction? Is that, was the new construction, does that relate to the effect, the effective date of when it was passed in the legislation? Or does that mean new construction means when a contract is signed regardless of whatever town you're in? When you buy a piece of land and you then, and then, okay, that, that was my point. Was that clear or was that confusing?
It's an excellent point. I, I would say that I could answer off the cuff and, and run the risk of being wrong. So I think that we can take that away and make sure that we're clear on what the legislation states on that.
Right, because, and then, and then if you have new construction in your town, you have, you, first of all, if you buy the land, does that mean when you buy the land, but you still have to build the buildings? Does that mean when the, commencing, when you build the building? I mean, when you start the first shovel full in the, in the whatever footer or the basement? Or does that mean when it's completed? Okay, that was, that was one of my one point. Second point was on your very expansive fiscal receipts and expenditures, 22 pages that I looked at. The last column was unencumbered, unencumbered column. Now, it was something like, that was a third of March, $115 million. I think I got that right. There was no zeros after it. Down, the unencumbered $115 million, has, has any of that been committed yet? Unencumbered means it hasn't been spoken for, I would assume. But anyway, I think that that unencumbered, since we got three, at least three-fourths of the way through the fiscal year that begins in July, that just, that, that should be used for the students. And unless you have an emergency, whatever, by now you would have started the, the new projects, I would believe, in the, in this fiscal year. And how much is that in reserve? It didn't, you know, unencumbered is different than the reserve. Okay, that was the, the two things I wanted to follow up on. And then on the thing, on, uh, point I made the last time I was here in September. I really think, you know, schools, regardless of what school district it is, we got to give the, the schools back to the teachers. We don't, we don't need all these tests. You know, colleges or tech schools know what kind of schools you have and they're familiar with the teachers and the courses you have. And teachers can, can develop, develop, develop their own curriculum. I was, I went to school there in high school when we were, we, we were in an emergency status on the space race and the cold war. We were building bunkers, which I helped my dad build in the basement. So the other thing, I know you have the cell phones. I know you're working on this, I believe, but got to do something. You got a small percent, 10% that are taking advantage and causing possible chaos or whatever in a particular classroom with this. I proposed no, no cell phones. Drug test, Air Force Academy and the Army and the Marines are giving blood tests and also the hair clipping off a hair if they find someone positive. It's a court martial. You can't, we, we went through stuff in Vietnam where it was really expansive. You don't want someone with a rifle or flying Mach II in an F-15 or in the new F-22, three times the speed of sound, which is 2,200 miles an hour. Excuse me. That was my alma mater, Albright College. I'm on the president's council there. So anyway, yeah, that's my point. You know, we got to give them, give them a, give them a drug test in the Air Force Academy. They removed over 100 students, they court martialed them. In the Army and then on active duty, you get up, up to two-year sentence now. They're not fooling around. So I think I made my, I want to finish on that. SATs, I don't understand why they don't have vocabulary on that. They say it's oblique language.
Five minutes.
Okay, that's it. Let me give you a break.
Mr. Rankin, thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker this evening is Julie Villacare.
Hello to the board and Dr. Kellogg. My name's Julie Villacres. I am a parent of Westerville City Schools times three, and I have two active students at Westerville South High School right now. I am coming to you tonight because I would like to say that the, there have been concerns over CPM curriculum, math curriculum since it was implemented. August of the year it was implemented, I want to say 2013, my daughter came home on the first day of school and her teacher told the classroom, "Good luck teaching yourselves math this year, guys." This was in high school. Shortly thereafter, he said if we didn't like it, to write the school board. Have your parents write the school board, which I did. I did submit a letter to the school board and to Dr. Kellogg and the upper level administration in the district in May of 2015. I'm here tonight because groups of classrooms in high school are using, are getting only group discovery from other students to, as a foundation for math to carry forward to an SAT and to college. Students are floundering in groups for the majority of classes without ever getting the instruction of a trained professional teacher. Students are confused, students that are confused and go up to ask a question to some teachers are redirected to the group of students to figure it out. Does this happen in every classroom? No. Is it happening in many? Yes. Numerous times over the last three years, I have requested data evidence that CPM is helping our students in this district be successful in preparing them for college, just as the name would imply. I have never received any data. Now, a group of students, a group of students has initiated a petition with these same concerns that we have expressed routine repeatedly over the last three years. Diane Conley, a former administrator from this district, once told me if she received an email or a concern from a parent, that she had to consider that at least five other people felt the same but didn't take the time to bring it to anybody's attention. So I ask you, how many letters, emails, meetings, and now petition have come before the board and the administration about this math program? Now multiply that by five. I would like to applaud these students for being passionate about their, their education and, and bringing this matter to the board yet again. I applaud them and I support, I would, I think you should support their passion for education and them advocating for the quality education that they deserve. And I support, I would ask you to immediately investigate the realities of CPM in this district's classroom and what it looks like because these kids are relying on this to take forward. And I appreciate you looking into the, the realities of CPM and immediately and promptly intervening. Thank you.
Our next speaker this evening is Srihari Gatapalli.
And my colleague is coming up to the board to hand out some papers to you guys. I hope you don't mind. So I'm going to be continuing where my colleague, Mr. Pham, has left off. We know that there are some teachers in the district who think that CPM is a good way to teach maths, but there are much more teachers who think it is terrible. Many teachers are so afraid of their jobs and their job reviews that they do not want to speak out against the administration. The former math curriculum specialist who retired from the district even threatened some teachers, saying the reviews would be severely compromised if they did not comply with teaching directly from the CPM script. We also found out from parents that they have been complaining about the curriculum for the past three years, but their pleas have fallen on deaf ears. Has the administration ever passed on these complaints to the Board of Education? We're guessing not. During our inquiry process, we found out that the administration told Westerville South students that they were the only ones who disapproved of the curriculum, but we contacted students at Westerville South and Central and found out that many of them are dissatisfied as well. Then we heard from parents who were told by the administration that it's just the parents who don't like the curriculum and that the students are fine with it. What kind of communication manipulation is this? Although we are just a small group of students, we represent a larger population. And in us presenting you with this petition, we believe that we represent so many more students across the district. Thus, we are asking you, our Board of Education, to launch your own investigation into the use of the CPM math curriculum in our district. The administration seems to be so worried about what you will find out that they are sending out their own surveys ahead of time, but they are sending out them out a little at a time to receive feedback in order to tweak the results that they will receive. They were also so worried about a presentation to the board tonight that we were forbidden to use the school email, the school Google Drive, the, and the walls of the school, the morning announcements over the PA, or even to be able to pass out literature to other students to ask them to come to the board meeting tonight. All of the people you see here came through the word of mouth. And this, I believe, really shows you how much people hate this curriculum and how much we needed to change. shows you how much people hate this curriculum and how much we need it to change. Now, if I may use a short analogy, remember the line from the original Star Wars movie where as Luke Skywalker hurtled towards the entry of the reactor chamber, the commander says to Governor Tarkin, "We've analyzed their attacks, sir, and there is a danger." Well, we think that exposing all this chaos to the Board of Education is the danger to this dead star known as CPM math curriculum. Now, to really drive home my point, there are students who dropped out of the CPM curriculum and pursued learning math online. Some of these students, two of their names are Brandon Braxton and Mohammed Mohammed. And in fact, there's a kid named Anthony Aventino who dropped out of the Westerville District just so he could receive a better education. Now, and our petition in itself, it has gotten 411 signatures, and this is just through word of mouth. This is just through us going to tables at lunch and speaking to people. This is through some of us going to math classrooms and giving presentations to the class. And I would like to remind you again, 411 signatures. This is no small amount, and our petition was also spread to the other schools, including, if my memory serves me correct, Westerville Central and also Westerville North. So, I implore all of you to please consider what we're saying and take action on this really, really important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gatapalli. Our next speaker this evening is Rachel Sharp.
Good evening, board. I am a sophomore at Westerville Central, and like they had just said, of some students that had dropped out of the CPM curriculum, I had done that last year for my second semester of math of my freshman year, because I had found that in the first semester of my freshman year that it was impossible to learn. It was hard, and it was, I think blatantly, I just felt that my education was disrespected. And when I had switched to an online math program, it had, I was so far behind. It had taken me, my brothers, I have two brothers, my sister, my brother-in-law, my friends, both of my parents, they had helped me for so long to try and catch up, and that still didn't do any good. Let's see. And I have, like, helped children before, because I babysit, and I have helped them. And in the past, I had helped a child, and she had come up to me later and said that what she, that what I had helped her with, and she's in the third grade, that it had been wrong because of the work that was done was incorrect, but the answer was. And frankly, I just think that's completely wrong. And so, I think that CPM is not a solution. It is something that should be taken away from our classrooms. It is ruining children's education, especially this future generation. Their baseline education is going off this. And if they learn addition, multiplication, subtraction, division from CPM, it will ruin their further education. And this can even potentially basically set them up for failure during the rest of their lives. And I, being taught like the normal way through my elementary and middle school education, before then, I had received pretty good grades, like B+, A-, in math, but since CPM wasn't implicated, implemented, it had dropped significantly. It has not gone above a Z+ since. And I finally think, I, I just think that's awful, because if you think about it, do you want these people being, do you want like our future generation being able to go out onto the world and having to work with four or five other people to try and figure out something that's very simple? What would it be like if you threw some car keys at an 11-year-old and told them, "Okay, just go drive, you know, maybe take a couple of friends with you, you know, just figure it out." You know, it would end in disaster, and that's exactly what CPM is doing. It is basically like if we were all like 11-year-olds and you threw us car keys and just told us, you know, "Just go figure it out." It ends in, it would end in disaster, and that's exactly what CPM is doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Our next speaker will be Peg Duffy.
As a retired speech teacher and forensics coach, I'll have to say a couple of those are a tough act to follow. My comments are in regard to the policy readings. The release time religious education has been around a long time, folks. There was a federal law for that when I was in school in the 1950s. It seemed to me in the policy discussion now, we were making the assumption that students were going to be going out on a daily basis. Now, unless things have changed, the release time religious education, I remember when we had a Presbyterian, a Methodist, and a Jewish person staying in the classroom, and the other 27 went to the various Byzantine and Roman Catholic churches in the millworking community. Something's changed, I guess. Now, release time off-site is a significant operative here, particularly in this community. Probably most of you weren't living here. I wasn't living here. I learned of it later on. But decades ago, we had no policy that said "off-site." And as a result, in Westerville, we conducted religious education in the classrooms. And if your kid chose not to go, your kid sat outside the door, same as he would have had he been punished for misbehavior in the classroom. Fortunately, a Unitarian and someone from St. Paul challenged that and got that ugly thing out of the way. Now, on final readings, you state the policy number, you state the title, period. You don't say anything more. You say, "If you want to find out more about it, go to the website." Come on, folks, we want people to be interested in what is going on. And if they have to start searching things on the website, digging for this, the gesture they're going to make at you is not going to be a real nice one. You need at least a summary statement. Now, we frequently get a summary statement when these are introduced in the first reading, but we're not getting them when you are actually passing them. Transparency? Come on.
Thank you, Peg. That concludes our public comments for this evening, and that will bring us to agenda item 14.01, board comments. Who would like to start?
I would like to ask the superintendent, actually, to make some comments, if you don't mind, John. I'm putting you on the spot.
That's what I'm paid to do.
Yes, it is. Some questions that I have, I have some others, but these we'll do for this evening. I would like for you to draw the picture for me, if you would. Where were we before CPM? What was the context for the approval of CPM, the development approval of that particular curriculum, those particular materials? Where were we then? Where are we now as regards student performance? And also, where are we now as regards the implementation calendar? With each of our curricular implementations, there is a specific timeframe allotted for the development of the curriculum and the implementation of the curriculum, and the implementation requires certain steps to be accomplished. And one of the things I, before you answer, and I'll give you a chance, since I put you on the spot, to think, there was a comment that said that we were going to, the district was going to survey teachers, and we were going to do so, so, and then tweak the results. No. The surveying is an actual part of implementation. It's a necessary component. It's something that we've been waiting until we do have it implemented, until we have some results, until we have some data we can look at, until we have some teacher experience aligned. The survey will be going out to teachers, may have already gone out, I'm not sure. And it's not done so that we can tweak what is said. It's done so that we can identify what is going well and what is not going well with implementation. So, I want to, I want to clarify that, because I don't want teachers to receive a survey and think it's a farce, because it's not. And hopefully, I gave you enough time to think about those. Where were we? What was the context? What do we see? What are we doing?
Let me start by saying that any comments I make tonight, or made in the past to people, are not intended to not reflect the personalized stories, many of which we heard this evening from individuals in classes. That those stories, those individuals who have bought those to me, either informally, through email, through phone calls, through meetings, have discussed math with individual students, have discussed math with student advisory, have discussed math as questions from the public in many cases, and to the board, to the issue of whether or not administration has been open to the board about the implementation and its impact on the system. If I failed to keep you apprised effectively, then I need to know that, so that we work effectively as a team in the future on such issues. So, let me, let me say that upfront, because bottom line is, I don't have a dog in the The dog in the fight for me is improving math instruction to improve results. And I know that's the same for everybody in the room. So, let's go back, let's back up the bus a little bit to kind of impetus. So, there's, I'm going to kind of funnel this down. On the, on the big picture across the nation, across Ohio, across, in the issue of math in the United States, there's a long history of data that demonstrates that what we're doing as a country, without argument, is not working. It's not, it's not very effective. As we compare ourselves to international benchmarks, and as we look at that, we know that that's the case. And there's almost no research you can show me that's going to dispute that. You can show me research, but there's almost no research that's going to dispute that. So, what happens in that context is then we get to about 2010, when we have the implementation of both Common Core state standards, the adoption by Ohio of Common Core state standards, which were specific to language arts and math. And behind the Common Core standards to math, despite anybody feels about them, is this pressure about math instruction, math curriculum in this country, and what it looks like and how it's impacting students. And so, that leads to state standards, which then at our level gets translated into curriculum, local curriculum, by our teachers. The standards of the state, the local curriculum is written by our teachers. Second impact at that time, the state of Ohio adopts a change in math requirement for graduation. No longer is it three, three years of math, some algebra, some geometry of some sort, and something else. It becomes four years of math, inclusive of algebra, too. And anybody who knows that, you know what a step up that is for students and for, and for teachers, and that's where the pressure point is. Students, parents, teachers, that's the pressure point that we're dealing with. So, at the district level, and I'm not making excuses about my presence in this discussion and my impact in this discussion, I'm just pointing out history. So, as I come on board in '13, the district is in the middle of two things, adopting new graduation standards, four years of math, inclusive of algebra, too, for all students, and at the same time, college and career readiness standards that we all know and value that are important for our kids. And part of that local decision on curriculum was to eliminate some lower-level math courses, most specifically the integrated track of Integrated A, Integrated B, and math topics. And I can tell you, if you look at that curriculum, that curriculum was not college and career readiness to today's standards. Students who were finishing their math through that curriculum were not prepared, absolutely not prepared. The other piece that's in there is a transition piece called Foundations Algebra, which was meant to be a bridge for students as we went from eliminating the integrated track to where we are today. So, those, so the other pieces of this puzzle that seem to get lost in the shuffle, aside from the adoption of CPM, is the elimination of some curriculum that doesn't align the college and career readiness standards and an increase in the graduation requirements as we're adopting new standards. So, that puts the district in a position of also facing state tests. So, the timeframe between adoption of new state standards, where you have to mobilize your teachers to rewrite their curriculum and adopt materials, is truncated to about a four-year span. Nobody, nobody, nobody changes that much curriculum in that short of a span of time and adopts some materials. The other variable in this is, because the pace of the nation is going so fast, the materials available to support the adoption are fairly limited. So, what's available even on the marketplace to look at to see if it aligns with the new state standards is fairly limited. So, what you have is teachers working frantically and hard to align local curriculum to the standards, elimination of low-level curriculum that's really not valuable, and trying to find the right materials to support the classroom. So, now you have a whole host of students who are going to have to access more math at a higher level than ever before, and trying to find materials that are going to support that in the classroom. And so, as this district went through, and I'll disagree with some of the criticism about references to administration, 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 our teachers were engaged in the process, as they have been in the past, and that's the voice we will, we will always appreciate first and foremost, coupled with parents and students. And I hear the parents and the students, I hear what you say tonight, and we're not going to ignore that voice. But the voice we're going to pay the most attention to is going to be the teacher. So, that's kind of the history. I also want to remind folks about math performance in the district at that time period. You can take a look at our ACT scores. We were scoring about a little over state average, around state average, we were holding our own, but we had, by reports, somewhere out at a 30% remediation rate for our students going to state schools. Those are our students who are taking ACT, not all students do, and are going to a state school at a 30% remediation rate. Let me remind the board and the community that a year from now, by state standards, every 11th grader is going to have to stake a college readiness exam, either the SAT or the ACT. So, we're going to go from a participation rate of whatever we have today to 100%. So, all those kids coming through math, all those students coming through math, all those students we're supposed to be preparing for college and careers are going to have to come through that curriculum and take that test, and we'll have, we'll have some idea of where that puts us. So, I, you know, that's kind of the history. Where we are today, and I'm glad you mentioned, Dr. Nestor Baker, you may recall, a few months ago, the board, and it's on our website, adopted a revised curriculum and a materials adoption process, which is fundamentally where this goes, goes to. And in that document, there's changed practices related to parents' opportunity to review curriculum, parents' opportunity to review materials that had been absent before. And some of that comes from state law, and some of that comes from lived experience and my own personal belief about teachers at the prime, at the forefront of this thing and design, parents, and parents in particular, having opportunity, and I can see a place for students of certain ages to have opportunity to give us some feedback on it, it's been absent before. So, that's in there. And also, what's in there is, when you get into the implementation phase, which is about third year, which is where we are, I've asked our curriculum department to have measures of how's it going, just a simple how's it going. So, in order to put that together, we reinstated the department facilitators as part of our infrastructure, as a feedback mechanism directly to the schools. We directed the curriculum department to have monthly meetings with the department facilitators. We did not do that in the past. They only met at the school. We now meet with them monthly, with our curriculum department, to listen to what's going on and finding out what's working, what's not working, so we can make adjustments. So, as part of that, in this discussion, knowing that there was pressure and discomfort and dissatisfaction, is the right word, with a number of people, and I'm not going to argue the numbers, nor am I going to state it's more concentrated in one school, nor am I going to state it's only some students, nor am I going to state some parents. Doesn't matter. We need to know. And so, in talking with department facilitators, they suggested that we build a teacher survey. It's a measure of teacher perceptions on a number of domains around the implementation of CPM. Not meant to be some political timing device around the petition here this evening or anything else, it meant to be the honest effort of finding out from our teachers where we're at, and what adjustments they think they might, might need to be made, and their comfort level with where they're at, and their perceptions of students, their perceptions of group work, their perceptions of tests. Because clearly, there's some misunderstanding out there. I can take, for example, the quote that CPM requires group tests count 20%. CPM, not, not only does CPM not require group tests, it suggests them, and there's a research base behind that, it also doesn't suggest 20%. All of those are teacher choice. So, so, and then I'll take some more questions. So, that's history, that's where we're at. I have, I've shared with the board some other documents, I can answer questions related to those. That's where we're at. That's the history, that's where we're at, and we'll have that. That's the history, that's where we're at, and we'll have that student, teacher survey data that was prepared by our facilitators, our teachers, prepared the survey, reviewed the questions, I'll go out to those teachers, we'll get that back, we'll review that data, we'll share that with the board, and talk about what next steps might be. So I think I hit on all of them, and I'm sorry it was so lengthy, but.
No, you did hit it, and I didn't ask you small questions. They're big questions, and this is a big issue. There is no doubt, I don't think in anybody's mind, that this has been an incredibly tough implementation. The setting that led to it was unheard of in so many ways. You talked about the truncated timeline and so forth, and that created real problems for us. But that doesn't mean that we just go along and go, okay, well, we've done it, now we're done, and that's not what we're doing. You said, I think, the key phrase, "We need to know." And taking the information that the students gave us, and also the parents, and also the extraordinarily important information that we're going to receive from the teachers, and then acting on that information is the way to know and to decide the pathway forward. So I am deeply concerned, I've been concerned, you know I've been concerned. I am particularly, though, focused on finding out from the teachers where they are and what they feel, and what their belief is. And the department facilitators, that was a huge step forward, I'm really, really glad that the board chose to do that. There have been steps taken in the last couple of years to help alleviate this sort of situation. You can't ever say it won't happen in this way again, because we don't know what sort of external pressures will be placed on us to make it happen, but we have taken a number of steps, and now we need to take additional steps to find out exactly where we are. Thanks, John.
And we do have, you know, I think, again, not to dismiss the experiences that people have, frustration, people have been frustrated with math instruction and the old system as well. There is some data relative to grades, there is data relative to other school systems that use CPM, and you can talk about those, but it doesn't mean that people who are having a, if the experience isn't fitting their needs right now, either because of that individual learner, or because of that teacher's implementation of the system, doesn't mean that that's not, they're not having a bad experience. I don't know, the, with the teachers, they try and get a sense of how extensive they're feeling that, and then taking it from there, so. And I'm happy to answer any other questions the board might have on this.
You may have said it already, when is the survey to go out? General timeframe, maybe?
My sense was we probably have something back pretty soon after spring break.
Okay, and about when to come back? I mean, give them a couple of weeks to fill it out, get it back to us, or have we set those kind of time?
What we'll do is when we get the results back, we'll sit down with board leadership and talk about when the appropriate time is to bring it forward. We'll probably do some kind of short analysis to the board through the Friday update, similar to some of the other information I've given you today on our math instruction today. It's something, certainly the timeframe is this spring, because any tweaks, or any adjustments, or any major overhauls, we're going to have to put our nose to the grindstone and get them done before next school year.
Dr. Nestor Baker is so much better versed in curriculum and that area of our charge than I am, and you may or may not know that that is her, that's one of her liaison positions, why she was really kind of directing the askings up here. But I assure you, and I'm trying to choose my words quite carefully, that I, for one, and I don't speak on behalf of the board, but I will, we are very interested in hearing comments and input through this survey, and will not expect any massaging of the results, and I guarantee you that that is not the administration's desire. I have, what's a great phrase you use, dogs in the fight. I got two dogs. They would prefer I call them children, but I have two dogs who are in the thick, and I want to know that we are providing the best material to have the best success. And it's not us and them, you and us. It's all of us trying to figure out what is the best way to provide students with the best opportunities, and to provide the best tools in the hands of our, what I consider a superb core of teachers in all our schools. So I think I've slipped into board comments, sorry about that.
Before we move away, I think it might be helpful in a public setting for me to hit on a couple of data pieces that people have referenced. And again, I don't do this to minimize anybody else's personal experience of how it's impacted them, but I go back to the impact of the change in graduation requirements and the change in our curriculum, which fundamentally means more kids are accessing, taking more classes and more higher-level math classes than ever before. So here's some data relative to that question. Since 2012, which is 2012, 2013, the two years prior to adoption, 213, 214 with, so over those four years, we've had a 62% increase in number of students taking Algebra I and a 34% increase in number of students receiving Algebra I credit. We have more kids taking Algebra I, more kids earning Algebra I credit. In geometry, we're 34% increase in number of kids taking geometry, with a, got to put my glasses on, 28% increase in number of students earning geometry credit. We have a 33% enrollment increase in honors geometry, with a 33% increase in number of kids earning honors geometry credit. We have a 38% increase in the number of students taking Algebra II, with a 44% increase in the number of students earning Algebra II credit. And we have a 10% increase in honors Algebra II enrollment, with a 14% increase in number of students earning Algebra II, honors Algebra II credit. So to the question of, do we have more kids taking higher-level math and getting credit? Absolutely. To the question of failures, yes. We have an Algebra I failure problem that shows up from 2014 to 2015. We have an increased bubble in the number. It goes from 8% in, 8% failure rate in 2012, 8.3 in 2013, 11% in 2014. Last year, we jumped to 23%, which was the first year without the foundations of algebra. Through first semester of this year, compared to first semester of last year, our failure rate in algebra at the semester point had dropped by 8%, which would put us back closer to that, I don't like any, I want a zero failure rate. I'm not arguing the number, I'm just saying, I'm not saying the number's acceptable, let me say it that way. We've got to get more kids through Algebra I, that's what we've got to do. And that came because our conversation with the high school principals about that number's not acceptable to us, and their work with their math teachers and getting back in the classroom. So that set of data says some things about what's going on. It doesn't say, and I'm not arguing the point about whether or not someone's comfortable under the model or the assessment practices, but I think part of this discussion, we have to clear away the clutter and talk about what really is impacting people, and I fundamentally think it's that in-the-classroom experience of what a group experience is like, whether or not that's going well, and when is it appropriate to choose not to stay in a group structure, but to move to individualized instruction, whole-class instruction, when to move back into. So those are some numbers. I've been asked about grades, that's some grade analysis that I have. I've been asked about ACT. The only relevant thing that I, to date, that I've been able to find is Solon High School up in northern Ohio, I shared their school profile with you, they adopted CPM as their math curriculum in 2011. Their average ACT for math, I think, is 26.5. In 2008, it was 25. I'm not saying CPM jumped their ACT score, but I'm also going to say that I don't think their, whatever experience they're having is necessarily thwarting their ACT scores, efforts either, so. And you can take that for what it's worth, maybe worth a hill of beans, but it's one place where, and that was the, that was the place we visited, our teachers visited and saw implementation and came back from. So anyway, some of the other stuff that we have looked at, we are looking at, put it in the context of what the teachers are saying the experience are, and go from there before we do some, make a shift that doesn't help us.
So before we move on, a couple of questions. The weighting of group tests, is it differently from classroom to classroom?
It's purely classroom practice, it's purely teacher decision. It is not fundamentally prescribed in there as anything, and in fact, if you listen, as I've sat in the training and they advise you, there's a, I'm not going to get complicated, I shared with the board some research on some of this group dynamics and what the theory is about socialization versus cognitive development, right? Are you doing groups because you want socialization, learn to play together nicely? Or are you doing groups because you're trying to expand, you're trying to work off each, right? Many of us have been in very academic rigorous situations and have had study groups for the purpose of elevating our own thinking through conversation, which is different than a goal of doing it for socialization purposes, let's get to know each other and work in groups. But there is nothing in CPM that prescribes that you have to do them, and that they have to count a certain percentage. And we've made that clear, I've made that clear to my staff, and that's been clear from our curriculum department, no, it is not, and that's been repeated a number of times.
Secondly, do you have a copy of the survey you sent out? Can we get a copy of that? I looked through here real quickly and I didn't see anything. It is in here.
I did not see it.
It's in this one. Okay. I'll go on. First off, parent in the district, have two girls at South, I know some of you out here have taken algebra, geometry, Algebra II, very familiar with CPM. Completely understand, having three children, each child learns differently, and from what I hear from each of you, and I know many more looking at the petition, that the way the material, and correct me if I'm wrong, is being delivered, isn't the way you learn. Yes? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, just kind of clarifying some of that. I'm sorry. I want to say that we hear what you're saying, and we are going to look at things. I'm very interested to hear from the teachers. Every time I go in for a conference to talk to my children, I bring up this topic and get their opinion on things, and it's interesting, several different teachers, all kinds of opinions, each one very valid. But I do think we need more data before we make big decisions. I will tell you that we will continue this conversation, because we do hear you, and we have heard you, several of you, we've received emails for years. So thank you, thank you for coming tonight and speaking, I appreciate it.
The survey isn't in the packet. It would be very helpful if we could have a copy of the survey. We have the petition, we have the petition signatures.
Oh, I didn't mean talking about the survey, I said I'll be forty, two, seven, five.
Yes.
Yeah, but I would, I would.
Yes.
Yes.
I would still like to see it and would like to see the questions that were asked.
Me too.
Maybe send it to our email addresses. Can you do that? Awesome, thank you.
It's another piece of information that should go into all of this information gathering that we're doing. We need it to factor it into our data analysis.
So additional comments from the board this evening? Who'd like to go next? Or start?
I just had one thing. Peg was talking about the policy components, and John, you and I had a very brief discussion about it, we hadn't had the chance to act on it in any way, and I hadn't had a chance to talk to anybody else about it. The idea of including a brief statement about what the policies are when they're introduced, and also when they're back for final reading, so that we can have more understanding of what the heck it is we're voting on.
I take it a little different direction. You're going to call on him? You're going to call on him? You're president. He's got to do that.
I'm sorry, is it just a question?
Yes, it is a question. Real quick, I'd just like to point out, my hand up for about a minute or so, but I like, I heard what you're saying about a teacher survey, and I'd like to know if you all are thinking about the student survey, because I know teachers, they're smart people, and I believe they're people who love what students are doing, of academics dishonesty while doing these things, so I think you're going to get the full picture. I think you may want to do like teachers, students, and parents, and that, get like a full graph, one point from this survey. And I really want to point out, I started waiting stuff during the middle of it, because the system's not, so I have to cut it out, put in the good news, so it's not a priority for sure.
Thank you.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you. Really, my board comments. One, I hope it's okay if I shift and say, yay Wildcats, can I say that? Is that okay? Well, that's what I said, didn't I? I said Wildcats, didn't I? Okay.
Yeah, you did.
Thought I might have slipped into Warhawk or Warrior, okay, yay Wildcats. That was awesome, I was there, great job, it was very exciting. We're going to honor them, and we're going to do good stuff. I just wanted to get that out, we have not, we have not let that slip past us, it's awesome. We're excited when any of our students do just superlative athletic and academic things in community service, so just wanted to share that. I really, I want to thank you, the students, for coming and speaking. I'm sorry we have a particular time limit, but we do, just to honor everybody who's here, and I want to thank you for taking the time to be here, sharing with us. I hope that we've communicated, that we do want to really flesh this out, and I'm interested in this because I'm on this board, but I have some, I have some personal interest there as well. And just a final note, that I want to pass along the, it's sad news. Some of you know maybe the name Linda Mitten, is a longtime member of our gifted program. She passed away Friday, March 11th, and I know that some of you probably knew her, and just a well-respected part of the team. But I wanted to share with the community that services. Memorial service will be held this coming Saturday, March 22nd, I'm sorry, March 26th at Sheddinger Northeast Chapel, Johnstown Road. So again, that's for Linda Mitten. We certainly extend our condolences to family and to those who worked with her, who I know will feel that loss. And again, service this Saturday, Sheddinger Northeast Chapel, 2:00 PM. Thank you, sir.
I said I didn't want to speak, but I do. Shocker. So real quick, Rick, you brought up the Wildcats, and I want to throw out a kudos to Coach Kallo. Did anyone see him speak and read his quote in the paper? It was all about the kids. It was all about the kids. We just have so many amazing teachers and coaches out there, and we can't do it without them, and I just, amazing, so kudos to them and his staff, and, yeah, so that's it.
Well, I think as we wrap up this board meeting for today, Mr. Vam, I'm actually going to read the very first line in the response that I replied to you with on January the 27th. There was a suggestion of non-response- There was a suggestion of nonresponsiveness, and I received an email from you on January the 22nd, and I responded on the 27th. And the very first thing that I said was, "First, my respect and admiration for your efforts both to find a voice in the public square and to conduct an analysis of the curriculum. Acknowledging the value of both your opinion and your analysis." I think it's important when, in the course of public comments, to recognize, first of all, the courage that it takes to come and stand at this podium. So recognize all the students and adults that came and did so, as I do every time. Speaking in the public square is not easy. And speaking passionately about what we believe in sometimes sounds like an easy notion, but ends up being more difficult than we think it will be. I've said this before in, in board proceedings, one of the challenges is the depersonalization that occurs. I have two children, freshman and senior, graduating senior at Westerville Central. One of them, the oldest, has taken math in a non-CPM setting at St. Charles for his first two years and in a CPM setting for his last two years. And he complained consistently about mathematics in all four years. In 1981, the same math anxieties existed and the same arguments about curriculum existed when I started as a freshman in mathematics. These are not excuses and rationalizations, but they're realities. Amongst all curricular topics in education, mathematics is the one that is charged with the most emotion, which I find really, really interesting, because it is the science of precision, and yet it is flooded with emotions. I do a tremendous amount of quantitative and qualitative analysis, high quant mathematics in, in part of my career. So I have a tremendous belief in the need for us to get globally competitive, competitive in mathematics. I've seen the problems that are caused by not having qualified candidates to hire because of mathematical skill issues within the United States. So I've lived it personally. None of which are really reflected in, in a personalization of us as board members this evening. Couple of things that are interesting as we manage through the process of these curricular changes. One of the things that was brought up is historically, this was a situation where the United States government moved very quickly, and this is where one of those realities that comes to bear on, on us in everyday life kind of just rears its head. A lot of times, old people make bad decisions that young people have to bear the burden of. In this case, the speed that we forced this through caused us to deal with the consequences of trying to develop curriculum, get materials, meet state requirements. And we are, we are working very, very hard. I think that the suggestion that there is a conspiracy to make kids do bad in math is unfortunate, because that's really not the case at all. We want you to be successful. We don't want you to fail. And I think that the, the effort and, and the thoughtfulness and the work that we're doing for it to be casted as a, now we're trying to cover ourselves by doing surveys or when it was part of our process for continuous improvement, it is a little frustrating. But part of sitting in this seat is being able to take the heat, right? But I just ask for some consideration that many of us sitting here today are parents. Many of us who are sitting here today have children that are taking math, and we're working through these processes with you as well. One of the other things that's really difficult to, to get when you're not sitting here is a really important realization about how a school district that's 220-plus million dollars a year and nearly 15,000 students and 1,100 teachers, we lose sight of the fact that, and I had to learn this recently, it takes two full board cycles for significant change within a school district. I think a lot of times, there's a discussion or an expectation that, you know, we are going to make quick change, and it's common sense, so let's just do it. But it takes two full board cycles, which is four years, because you heard references to it this evening. Attorneys, legislatures, CPAs, regulations, laws, the, the complexity of managing a school system makes it difficult for agility. The unfortunate reality is, is that there are children going through certain parts of the education cycle that are subjected to that. And we recognize that. And I personally respect and admire you for voicing your concerns. This public square exists for that. I encourage you to use it. This is the first, since I've been on the board, the first impassioned plea specifically about CPM that I've heard. And I've now been on the board for nearly two years. I know that information's been shared with administration during that course of time, but this podium has always been here through every, every session, and it is your forum. So thank you very much for having that voice, and thank you very much for sharing information. And we'll take that back and we will continue to try and improve as we go along. That being said, just a real brief personal statement, if I could, I apologize for going so long. Very disoriented today. Obviously missed a number of my cues, gavels. And it's just, as many of you know, in the community, because a lot of people have asked me recently for an update, this marks three months. It's a major change in my life, losing my wife. And I will reemphasize what I said early on in this, in this journey for us. School administration, both at the district level as well as at Westerville Central, I could not be doing what I'm doing, I could not be sitting in this chair without all of those folks supporting my family as well as my fellow board members. So thank you very much. It's just been a bit of a distracted kind of couple of days for me, so I apologize for any inconsistencies in the board, in the board flow this evening. All right? Any additional comments, questions, issues? If not, I'll call off the information about our next board meeting. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, April 11th, 2016, at 6:00 P.M. at the Early Learning Center, 936 East Wind Drive, and on Monday, April the 18th, 2016, at North High School for the GEM Awards. And that being said, if I can have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mark, if you call the roll, please.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes. We are adjourned.